Good evening and welcome to the City of Pasco Council Workshop Meeting. The council thanks you for being a part of our city government. At workshop meetings, the council discusses issues, but no formal action is taken. The Agenda Packet is available on the City of Pasco's website at www.pasco-w.gov/Agenda. Please note that the City Council meetings continue to be held remotely and may be accessed through GoToWebinar. This meeting is being also televised live on Pasco TV, Channel 191, on Spectrum Cable in Pasco and Richland, and streamed on the city's Facebook page, website, and YouTube channel. This and previous council meeting videos is available on the city's website. Through Proclamation Number 20-28, Governor Inslee extended the directive making temporary changes to the Open Public Meetings Act. These virtual meetings will continue until the OPMA restrictions are lifted. The public may submit their comments and/or questions for items not on the agenda by contacting the city manager or city clerk, or using the feedback form on the city's website. And with that message, lastly, I would like to welcome Boy Scout Troop Number 159 to the council's virtual workshop. Attending a public meeting of the governing board is a requirement of the scouts in obtaining their citizenship in the community merit badge, and is an honor to help these scouts learn about the workings of municipal government. So this is a shout out to the Boy Scouts Troop 159. Thank you for joining us tonight. We regret that you couldn't be in here in person, but just know that we're here for you. Anytime you guys have a question, you can give us a call and are happy to have you in our virtual meeting here tonight. So thank you very much and hoping everything is safe. I would like to also mention it once again, you know, we are maintaining social distancing everywhere we go with sanitizing. And we now have our masks, not only for the purpose of COVID, but I would highly suggest N95 masks if you can get a hold of them to protect yourself from the poor air quality we're experiencing here in Pasco. It's pretty obvious that we're all, we all know about it, but I would just let you know that currently our air quality index from, you know, my resources on the internet right now are at 425, which is very hazardous conditions. And we highly suggest that people stay indoors in a, in an air filtration system type environment so you can minimize the exposure to the smoke. And hopefully, we can get out of this soon. Unfortunately, it seems like it might be around for another couple of days. So please, protect yourself, protect your neighbors, protect your, anybody, your friends, anybody who you can help. If they need assistance, please do, do what us Pascoites and our citizens do here in Pasco and help one another. So thank you for that. With that, maybe have a roll call, please.
Council members Alvarado.
Is Mr. Alvarado on the line? We can come back.
Okay, Councilmember Maloney.
Present.
Milne.
Present.
Roach.
Present.
Serrano.
Here.
Mayor Protem Barajas.
Present.
And Mayor Martinez.
Present, and we'll give one more opportunity for Mr. Alvarado. Are you, are you on the line?
Yes, can you hear me?
I can hear you now. So thank you. Thank you for that, Mr. Alvarado. So with that, we would normally have Troop 159 lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, but if you would all rise and I will go ahead and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you for that. Well, we'll write it on the Agenda Items. We have verbal reports from council members. Would anybody like to report anything from the council? I will go ahead and start with, today, you're, I was able to attend a panel of four other mayors. The other cities were Vancouver, Washington, Bellevue, and Spokane, and then myself from Pasco. We were on a panel for the summit, Policy Summit for the Association of Washington Businesses. And we have got to share all the activities that we have been doing to address the issues in our city with COVID-19 and get also provide another, one another with information to try to get in front of how, of, of the things that we can accomplish so that we can move forward in spite of this pandemic and keeping everybody safe. There was, if I'm not mistaken, there was over 85 people at this policy summit. And we were actually honored to be, the moderator for the mayors was Fred Rivera from Vice President of the Seattle Mariners. So that was kind of, kind of nice that he volunteered to do that for us. So anyway, it was, it was a great event. We got to share a lot of what's going on in Pasco and collaboration with all the cities, and it was quite a success. So just wanted to share that. Anybody else in the council want to share anything?
This is Mayor Protem Barajas.
Yes, Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Mayor, for sharing that information. Yes, we have been working together with many cities to come out of this COVID and everything that's happening. But I just want to quickly share that I went over, I drove over to Colfax to meet up with our fire department out there. Thank you, councilmembers, our Roach. Thank you to our block watch captains that gathered supplies, care packages, waters. And so just dropped in on the command center over in Colfax, spoke with Chief Gere, not sure if he's on. Just got a little bit of the layout of what's going on, everything that they're doing out there. Just asking, requesting to continue sending good vibes, prayers, whatever you do, but keep them in mind. They're away from their families, they're braving the fires out there. And so I'm sure once Chief Gere comes back on, he'll share a little bit more about all the work that they're doing out there. But again, just wanted to share that as far as I could see, our Pasco Fire Departments are doing well. They were also joined by Ellensburg, West Richland. Several other cities are coming in to help them out.
Mayor Protem, thank you so much for doing that. It really means a lot, I'm sure. And I am so happy that you could represent us and show our appreciation, and I think it means a lot. So thank you for taking the time to do that. I also saw right before, right before the meeting here tonight, Ben Shear was on local TV news giving advice and instructions on how to keep us safe with the, with the smoke hazard that we were facing now. And I know they've been busy doing the things that you just mentioned. So appreciate the fire department very much for all their work and their dedication these last several weeks. Anybody else?
This is Councilmember Alvarado.
Yes, Mr. Alvarado.
Just a quick report from Benton Franklin Transit. We had our monthly board meeting. And just, I guess, a, 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 a quick report. They've been making lots of efforts to make sure that the, and they had a presentation about how they're sanitizing all the buses and bus stops and things like that. And so just a lot of work is going to try to ensure the safety of our riders as much as possible. But also just reporting that there's just an upward trend in ridership. The ridership was definitely down significantly, and what they're seeing is just that upward trend, which is a good sign, just that we're, you know, we'll, it'll take some time, but there's a, they have a face recovery plan. And still, for those who are riding, they're still not collecting fares. You enter through the back of the vehicle and just, I think, pretty, pretty good to know they're still continuing the good work.
Well, thank you for that report, Ms. Alvarado. Sure appreciate it.
Yeah, Mayor, this is Councilman Milne.
Yes, Mr. Milne.
Thank you. On 9/11, I did attend the evening ceremony at the Kennewick 9/11 Memorial. So they had a whole bunch of different bike groups all around Tri-Cities. And it was very moving and had a couple of good speeches. And it was just good that we never forget and all the lives and sacrifice people have done for our freedom and just everything. It was a really moving ceremony. So I was glad that I was able to participate in that.
Well, thank you, Mr. Milne. Sure appreciate you showing up to that. I will tell you that, and I apologize for even forgetting to mention this tonight. But I also was remembering on 9/11, and there was, and maybe Mr. Zabel, you could help me, a memorial that came out from the city of Kennewick, is that correct?
Yeah.
That you sent us?
There was a memorial video that, yeah.
Yes, I got to see that video, and I got to tell you, there was some footage that really brought back a lot of memories. I can tell you exactly where I was when that moment came to be in September 11th, 2001. And really brought back a lot of memories and remembered all the people that didn't make it that day. So yes, thank you, Mr. Milne, for showing up and participating in that. And I did honor everybody we lost that day. So that was pretty important. So thank you very much for that. Anybody else? If not, then we'll move right along on items for discussion tonight. Tonight, our first discussion will be on urban growth theory expansion, comprehensive plan update. Mr. Jacob Gonzalez, how are you doing tonight?
Good evening, Mayor. Did Rick want to start the talk?
So Rick, do you want to go ahead and start that off?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a, just a quick update. Our consulting team, Ferreza and Ben Floyd, and our senior planner Jacob Gonzalez, for quite some time now have been working on a very complex process involving our comprehensive plan update and EIS preparation. It's complex. First of all, just the initial thrust of things, which has Pasco accommodating another 48,000 people over the next eighteen and a half years or so, and an expansion of our urban boundaries to accommodate that 48,000 people. And if you think statewide, there are not a lot of communities that are increasing in their population size by approximately 66% and accommodating an urban boundary expansion of 38 or so hundred acres. It's quite an undertaking. It's an extremely complex undertaking. And it's a lot like building a spider web. Each little string is connected to something else in the comprehensive plan. And it's very challenging to get all this in order to present something that passes muster with the public and internally here with city staff and outside agencies. We're nearing the last phases of this process, including the release of the final EIS and the transmittal of the, well, and carrying a recommendation from the planning commission on the comprehensive plan itself. And so it's time for council to get a fairly definitive update on this process. And leading us through that update will be again Ferreza, Ferreza and Associates, and Ben Floyd of White Buffs Consulting. And I also want to make a special reach out to Jacob Gonzalez, city's senior planner, who has really taken this project under his wing and is responsible for, I think, the quality product that you'll be getting a glimpse of tonight.
All right, thank you, Mr. Gonzalez.
Should we get started?
Yes.
Okay, so, so this is the first slide, right? Yeah, all right. Well, thank you, and like Rick mentioned, you have been seeing this and hearing about this for quite some time. I'm Ferreza, although the, it shows Rick white because we are using Rick's link to join this webinar. So, so you have been seeing this for quite some time. And like the comprehensive plan itself says, it is comprehensive. So it has a lot of, lot of wings and a lot of pieces that needed to be put together. We think that it's, it was great that the city has looked through the details of all of the components to come to this point. If you could go to the next slide. So your comprehensive plan is your guide to the city. So it is, it is guiding what the city wants to become in the next 20 years with all the growth and everything that you incorporate. So that's, that's why it's comprehensive. So let's, let's go to the next slide. So I'm going to talk a little bit about the framework of the comprehensive plan. So this is the framework that Washington State has, and you have heard this before, is the Growth Management Act. This gives the cities and counties a guideline and some requirements that jurisdictions would have to follow. There are requirements, but then every community, every city or county can tweak this comprehensive plan to meet your own requirements. So it's going to be a tailored version of the comprehensive plan. And then underneath that, there is this requirement of working with the region, with, with the county and other regional agencies. And then under that, you have the comprehensive plan by itself. So I'm going to be talking a little bit more about it in the next slide. So under the framework that you had just seen in the previous slide, it has a lot of requirements, a lot of elements, and land use and economic development, housing, transportation, capital facilities, those are all required elements of the comprehensive plan. And within that framework that you have seen in the previous slide, then you have this comprehensive plan, and then land use element is one of the elements. But the reason we are showing this here is because it comes down to the land use of the plan. So you would have in the implementation that Jacob will talk in a bit. So once you have the comprehensive plan, you have a land use map for the city. It's a broad brush of your land uses. It defines, it tells you where the businesses are going to go, where the housing is going to go. And underneath that, you have the finer tuned zoning map. Zoning map is more like, okay, so I have this residential area, and there could be three or four different types of housing that could go in that, that land use, residential land use. So that's your zoning map, that's your part of your development regulations, and then the zoning code. So those would implement your comprehensive plan. And like I said, Jacob will, will talk about it. Then let's, let's go to the next slide to talk about the comprehensive plan itself. So this is the comprehensive plan that we have been working for, working on it for this long. We have two documents, Volume One and Volume Two. Volume One is going to be what people would look at, and people will get a clear understanding of where the city is heading. Volume One would have your vision, your goals and policies, your framework of the plan, its connection with the Growth Management Act. So basically, within that, that framework, I mean, you will see that Volume One has a very simplified version. So once somebody reads it, it's supposed to be very easy for people to understand the city's direction. We tried to make it user friendly, so it's not, it's not a very rigid document. People generally think that planning is boring, but we have been in planning for so long, and we're doing okay. So if we go to the next slide, we'll talk about the, the Volume Two of the, of the comprehensive plan. And this is where you will find the detailed analysis of the plan. So what we looked at is what you have as a city, what you need, and how you are addressing those needs. So all those analysis are addressed in Volume Two. So it is more detailed. And I would like to mention regarding this, that the purpose of the entire comprehensive plan and all these documents is actually to identify and address where you're heading. And I swear you're heading, one of the things that you have already heard from Rick, that Pasco is growing pretty fast unlike any communities. So when we looked at your comprehensive plan existing condition, we found that you have a need for, so let, let me back it up. So we found that there's a huge demand of growth. There is a demand for housing and commercial, commercial facilities and all of that. And in the land capacity analysis, we, we performed that with, with Jacob, and, and we looked at different, what you have right now within the city limits. And if we go to the next slide, that is, that is what you have. This is your existing UGA boundary, city limits and UGA. And we, we, we analyzed the future growth based on the data that we have. And then we tried to put together that additional 48,000 people that Pasco is going to have by 2038. And we tried to fit them in, in the vacant land and other unutilized land within the existing UGA. And after that analysis, we found that not all the population or all the people would be, we wouldn't be able to fit all of them within this boundary. So that, that takes us to the next level, like how, how do you accommodate? So this, yes, and this is the, this is the other alternative that that city prepared in 2018 because it was, it was inevitable that, well, you cannot fit all the population, so you are going to need more land. So this was about 48,000 acres expansion to the north side of the existing UGA. So once that was prepared and then that was shared with the community, we, the city got a lot of comments from multiple agencies. And that led us, and from environmental point of view and from capital facilities points of view as well. So that led us to the, the drawing board, and we worked to develop another alternative, Three, in the next slide. And you had seen this before. I'm going to let Jacob talk about it. But this is, this is the more compact version of the, of the UGA expansion on the north side. And this has taken into consideration more pedestrian-friendly environment, more compact growth, and more, some of the development options or housing choices, all of those that the comprehensive plan has discussed and, and all the goals and policies. I mean, both options, Alternative Two and Three, we had discussed those. But you will see that Alternative Two has more low-density growth, and Alternative Three has a diverse pattern of use with the intent of having a, a, a compact growth. And after the DEIS, the draft, EIS was released, we got a lot of comments, about 250 comments from different agencies and public. So we have been working on those. And I will let Jacob identify some of the, the changes in the land use that, that has been going on. Jacob, would you like?
And good evening, Mayor, members of council. Correct, yeah, the map that you see in front of you, Alternative Three, which is slightly different than what we shared with you back in May and June. We believe it's Pasco's best approach for accommodating our future population increase along with meeting the growth management mandate. And so obviously, there's been a significant decrease to the urban growth area expansion itself along with the placement and allocation of a much more diverse range of land use intensities adjacent to each other to take advantage of residential and commercial proximity within each other to again meet the growth management mandate on multimodal opportunities to increase mobility options for residents in our community. These are just colors on a map, but I think it's important to know that each of these colors represents, as Oneza mentioned, a variety of zoning standards and also development features themselves. And so some of these communities will obviously want to be closer to the Corona grocery store or a place to get something to eat, a place to get your haircut, et cetera, or a school, which you will see in those blue features. And one of the primary goals of developing Alternative Three was taking into account all of the feedback we received from the community, from the private development sector, and also keeping in mind that this plan needs to eventually be approved. And so the Growth Management Act provides a, a series of goals for us to keep in line. And we believe that what you see in front of you on this slide is our best, is our approach at meeting that mandate. Oneza had mentioned a few changes, and I just wanted to point them out specifically. We, we have reduced the urban growth area by approximately 100 acres from what we had back in June. That is the result of the comments from the environmental impact statement, the draft. So we did take a look at those comments, 250 plus, and use them for the delineation of what you see in front of you. One of the areas that wanted, that had significant focus on them was land adjacent to the Tri-Cities Airport. You kind of see the extension of the airport zone. It's that gray feature kind of sticks out. And what we did was try to mitigate the concerns. At the time, there was concerns about high-density development near the airport, so we reduced that. And an item that we'll touch later on is that we also believe that by incorporating open space futures through the Plan Unit Development Ordinance, which council approved not too long ago, we can help this specific property meet their intended result without, without the negative impact of development near a public facility as important to us as the airport. Obviously, you can see the variety of residential and commercial uses along the future corridors that we intend to see. We were also able to avoid conversion of additional agricultural land specifically along the shoreline by taking into account, again, all of the ongoing efforts to build housing in the existing city limits. That includes the Port of Pasco's efforts at Osprey Point, potential projects in downtown Pasco, and also between the Blue Bridge and Cable Bridge. So all of these efforts that are in place or in progress allow us to take a look and revise the UGA so that it is practical approach to expanding our expansion. As was mentioned quite a bit back in May and June, we have to justify our expansion, and we believe that we have appropriately done so. And lastly, I want to point out that this map also includes results of discussions with the Confederate tribes of the Coal Reservation. You'll see some new land uses. It is a brand-new land use for us east of the 395 corridor. And this map also includes continued coordination with the Department of Natural Resources, which we have also created a specific land use to help meet our future growth demands while also meeting the intent of the transitional lands policy plan developed by DNR in the 80s. So this map, we believe, is representative of our best approach at meeting the Growth Management Act and the needs of the community here in Pasco.
You ready for me, Oneza?
Yeah, yeah, thanks. Thanks, Jacob. Yeah, if we could go to the next slide. Yeah, Ben, you're on.
Okay, great. Well, thank you, and good to be with you, Mayor Martinez and members of the council. Some of this, I know, is a little bit refresher, but we're also trying to share with you tonight some of the changes that we've made most recently. So you know, as you get ready to proceed with taking action on the plan and the final impact statement is issued, kind of what's, what's in it, the latest information. So just a reminder, the EIS elements, you can see them there, earth and surface and groundwater, all the different elements that we have to consider in the comprehensive plan. We did expand air quality from the draft to the final by adding in greenhouse gas. And we also expanded the environmental health discussion and, and a few other parts of the EIS. We added additional analysis and information into them. Next slide, please. As has been mentioned, we received almost 250 comments. We did extend the EIS comment period to the end of July. And you can see the, the different comments that we got. Of course, we got several comments from large landowners as well as individual citizens within the city, and also individuals that are just within the Tri-Cities region. Comments from the Confederate tribes of the Colville Indian Reservation, Franklin County, Port of Pasco, Benton Franklin Transit, four state agencies, Commerce, Transportation, DNR, and, and Department of Archaeology and Historic Preservation, and Futurewise. And so we compiled all those into a comment response matrix. That matrix is in your packet. We're not going to go through page by page, but you can look and see the different. but you can look and see the different comments as they're organized by topic. Um, so you see the comment and then our proposed response to them. Um, if we noted it, it was, you know, often just more of a, a statement that was made. Um, but if there are specific comments that need to be addressed, we address those as well. And we, uh, use those comments and the responses to update volumes one and two of the comprehensive plan as well as prepare the final environmental impact statement. Next slide. So we received, uh, some, I, I guess there were some emerging themes that came out of the, the comments. And so you can see here that we've got, uh, the protecting public facilities, including the airport from higher density residential development. Jacob already explained to you what we did there, but we modified the land use designations um, and, and some of the implementing regulations to help accommodate that comment. Um, one of the things that we heard from some commenters was that the city's U G A expansion, even under alternative three, which was the, the smallest expansion of the urban growth area, that there would be an impact of converting rural and agricultural lands to, to urban uses. And while that is true, there are rural and agricultural lands that would get converted and developed over time. Uh, the lands that are converted were not, uh, any of the lands that the county has designated as lands of long-term commercial significance. That doesn't mean that they're not important lands and they'll stay in agricultural production up until the time that development occurs. Um, but the lands that are being included are the ones that the county has identified as being not essential to the long-term economic health of the county. So that was an important distinction that we tried to make more clear in the final environmental impact statement. Um, and then there were comments about funding infrastructure to support the growth and expansion. How is the city gonna pay for this over time? Uh, so we tried to get more specific in the funding and other strategies uh, that are more clearly identified in the plan or referred individuals to, to, uh, some of the supporting analyses where they could get more of that detail. Oniza, would you like to take the next few comments?
Yeah, so, um, the other one was that, uh, whether we, the city is allowing more hu- housing types and densities. And our response is that city is already working on some of the development regulations, some zoning code changes, and that would allow more, uh, housing opportunities. Um, so that was a general comment. Um, the next comment we had was, next area of, of comments was that design of pedestrian-friendly and walkable communities. And the same response was that city is, um, undergoing through some changes in the subdivision code. And city already has, um, a complete street standards. So all of those pieces, when you put them together, then, then it will address the pedestrian-friendly community. Result into a pedestrian-friendly community. Um, let's go to the next slide. So the, one, one of the areas was that investment in downtown Pasco. And we clarified that, that the comprehensive plan document has already made reference to the coordination with Somos Pasco. And we just clarified that question. I think some of the comment areas that you'll see was, who came directly from E I S review. And, and we just clarified those because some of those already had been addressed in the comp plan. So we clarified that in the response as well. Um, traffic and congestion. So that's, that's another one that came for, from the E I S comment perspective. Uh, while the comprehensive plan analysis has already added or addressed what improvements were needed, we made that, that clarified, clarified that in the E I S documents as well. Uh, support for multimodal transportation alternatives. Um, our response was that the city is in the process of, of, uh, transportation system master plan update. And those with the H B nineteen twenty-three, uh, new options underway with more housing options, that would, would support multimodal transportation. And this will be reviewed in, into more detail. Um, outreach of private developers and real estate stakeholders. So that's, that's the, all of the areas that Jacob just mentioned, that there were some, uh, questions and some requests to change some of the, uh, land uses. And then there was also like, um, adding more land to the U G A boundary or, um, those types of questions came in. So Jacob had, um, and the city had discussed with, with property owners. So those follow-up, this, the map that you are seeing, that reflects all of those coordination. Um, consideration of increased, uh, recreation and parks. Again, I mean, we clarified that in the plan documents that, um, while we have some of the park lands identified, we cannot, uh, identify specific park lands in the U G A area. So some of those will be, um, clarified. And we did clarify that, that response in the next slide. Let's see, what's in the next slide? Okay. So modifying standards to align with stated goals and policies of regional agencies. So that's, that's more like, um, the consistency component. And we made updates to that clarification end as well. And I think then there, well, and there are a lot of other questions related to E I S. And Ben might be willing to, to talk about the next one.
Yes, thank you, Oniza.
Yeah.
Um, so, uh, we had some questions about environmental justice and equity impacts for future growth. And while the State Environmental Policy Act, uh, is really focused just on environmental effects, um, we have the option to add in additional detail if we like. And so we incorporated additional information into the final E I S on environmental health, as well as added the new section on air quality and greenhouse gases and then impacts to specific areas in the city and U G A alternatives. So we looked at, you know, proximity to hazardous facilities. Um, the ozone and, and how the additional growth might, uh, affect ozone and air, air quality, which, uh, we're experiencing, uh, some significant air quality issues, obviously, uh, today uh, and for the last little while. But anyway, so we looked at how the additional growth would affect, uh, air quality. Um, there were lots of questions about the resource lands and habitat impacts. And so we tried to update and clarify, um, where lands would be preserved, where lands would be impacted, um, and how those, uh, impacts would be mitigated. And then Jacob is gonna bring it home, talking about kind of the implementation comments we received on the plan and what implementation looks like and something that you'll be transitioning to uh, as you move forward with adoption and beyond adoption. Jacob?
Uh, thank you, Ben. Um, yeah, and as been stated, the implementation of the comprehensive plan is really where we, uh, as staff and as a community can realize, um, the stated goals and policies that have been, uh, established by the city. Um, it, those goals and policies obviously identified in volume one of the comprehensive plan. And at a, at a basic level, they mean refining our zoning and development standard requirements to reflect those goals. But it, it really, it's really gonna force staff to continuously evaluate all of the components of all of our long-range plans, from the comprehensive plan we have in front of us to sewer and water, to the upcoming transportation system master plan, to see how all of these stated, uh, needs with all of those plans align within each other. And then how do we actually apply those to the day-to-day applications we get here on a daily basis at the city? And, and there's a variety of ways to go about that. Uh, one that communities take upon themselves is setting up performance measures. So if we want to reduce congestion on our streets, we obviously have to go through a series of, of evaluations to identify how we can, how, how can we actually reduce vehicle congestion on our streets? Is that by allocating more, uh, land uses that are compatible with each other so that residents don't have to take longer trips by car? Can they be shorter trips? Can they walk? Uh, are we setting up infrastructure that is compatible with Ben Franklin Transit so that they can utilize these corridors for, uh, public transportation or bicycle lanes for bike travel? Uh, how can we utilize a, uh, a more proactive approach at developing these standards so that we can mitigate any potential long-term unexpected impacts on the infrastructure system? So we don't want to necessarily have to, uh, always expand all of our roadways. How can we make best use of our existing, uh, infrastructure? Uh, one that is probably gonna come up quite a bit because of the ongoing pandemic and the air quality right now is our resiliency planning. Uh, how can we make sure that when there is, uh, unexpected, um, conditions, such as what we have today, that residents have a community that they can still conduct their daily business in? Some of these we have answers to, some of these we, we don't. Um, but this is also the part where planners and staff get to do the, the, I, what I think is really the fun stuff, which is identifying how we can provide solutions for the long-term health of our, of our community. And, uh, another component that came out of comments from the Washington State Department of Commerce is setting up a growth monitoring pro- program. So, uh, obviously the expansion of the U G A is significant. We want to make sure that we take good care of that expanded U G A so that when we have proposals for annexation or preliminary plots that come through, we are going through all of our long-range plans and ensuring that this project meets the goals and policies of this plan and also doesn't, uh, prohibit any of the other long-range planning documents from being successful. So, uh, I, I think there will be a series of code amendments and development standard updates that staff will have to come back to the planning commission and eventually counsel with, obviously with the input of the community and stakeholders. Uh, and again, some of these we know the answers to, some of these we don't. And, uh, the implementation of the comprehensive plan should be evaluated every, every year.
This is Councilman Serrano. I just wanna kind of interject here. I appreciate what you just said, Jacob. Um, as you discussed metrics, one of the things that I'm looking at is, let's say we have a large landowner who wants to jump and all of a sudden they want to sell and start developing, um, assuming it suits the plan. Um, how do we ensure that, let's say, our transportation improvement plan has Road sixty-eight widening in five years and someone wants to build it tomorrow? Um, we're obviously gonna have to consider where our plan and our funding's coming from. Uh, do, do you have a metric to kind of harmonize those two? Because, you know, if you put in a significant number of houses or commercial buildings, uh, without that roadway widening, it's, it's gonna create, as you mentioned, you know, more impacts to traffic, which would cause then more air quality issues because people, you know, city id- sitting idling, um, and all those sorts of things. So I guess, uh, how do we ensure through metrics or whatever that we're not cart before the horse? Uh, where we're left without funding to make improvements that are necessary? And maybe that's not a you, maybe it's a Rick or Dave question or all three of you or, or the consultants? Just kind of thinking this through as we're looking at expanding significantly.
Uh, thank, thank you, council member. Uh, I, I guess I can offer a little bit. I, I think some of those, we, we have some tools available to us, but they need updates. We have a transportation impact analysis program. We have a transportation impact B program. Are those sufficient for the future? Is, is, I guess what I was saying when we don't know those answers entirely yet. So continued refinement and study of those will, will be required by staff.
If I can, if I can add to that? Um, so, um, concurrency is one of the things that your comp plan would have to address. What it means that you have to have growth in the areas where adequate infrastructure is available. So let's say you don't have a, uh, don't have a road to serve a development, then, then it's, it's not concurrent. So that's a, that's a tool that you have in your comp plan.
And so then how does that work, Oniza? Do they have to upgrade the road first or concurrently? How does, how does that work in the implementation?
So that would have to tie in, and Rick adds to this. Uh, so that would have to tie in with your capital facilities plan and capital improvement plans. So, um, new development comes in and there is impact fees that they would pay. And that would be their share of the development. So, so I, I guess at this point, it's, it's gonna be like looking at concurrency and multiple items together.
I think maybe another answer to this is that some of these things still have to be figured out. The plan sets the framework. It sets the foundation. It lays the boundaries for the uses and all of that. There's still a whole lot of details that get figured out. And that timing and sequencing is something that, as Jacob mentioned, uh, kind of gets, really gets figured out as part of the implementation.
And, and Councilman Serrano and, and the rest of council, we, we coincidentally just had about an hour and a half meeting and discussion this morning on this very exact issue where we need to, and our transportation system master plan consultants are going to help us with this. But if we continue with the transportation system example, there's, w- we're going to have to develop a list of projects and a way to proportionally, um, require the development community to do their share. And their share, like I mentioned, is going to be proportional to their development. But if you want to jump out ahead, ahead of the capital plan, ahead of our six-year transportation improvement plan, then there's, there's going to be a cost with that. And that cost means you may have to assume a larger proportion than you normally would be assuming if the project for a road widening, for example, was contained in our capital plan or our transportation improvement plan. Um, it's a combination of specific analysis, you, wise use of, uh, the State Environmental Policy Act and our existing transportation mitigation measures to come up with something that, um, addresses whatever that need is at that time. I- it's a complex issue. I don't know that I have a simple one or two-sentence answer. Um, but I think some of the measures that you've heard outlined just in the last few minutes all will relate to some kind of equitable solution to that kind of scenario.
Thank you. I, I really appreciate, uh, all four of you, each, each one of you with your, um, thoughts on this. You know, I, I think, and I probably speak for several of us. You know, I certainly don't want to be that guy that's wrote sixty-eight version two point O, right? Um, because most people point backwards as that happened too fast and, and there were some failures, even though it was a significant amount of growth that really the foresight probably couldn't have been there. Um, but I don't also want to wear the hat as, as someone who does that. And also, at the same time, I think we need to be, um, I don't want to say sensitive, but aware of, or, or at least make those who own land or are in the property development business aware of, uh, you know, alternative solutions. As you mentioned, Rick, maybe potentially additional mitigation fees. Just, I think there's concern, at least that's been expressed to me, is that, uh, a builder or a land developer or someone owning land is gonna get a hard no because they are ahead of the curve. And I think, uh, what I just heard you say is, yeah, it might end up being more difficult, burdensome, possibly more costly, but there will be opportunities to, again, if someone jumps ahead of the, the curve, uh, it, it can be done. It just, it's gonna take more thinking and potentially more resources. So, uh, again, I just kind of look at it from those two perspectives. So I appreciate what you all had to say.
If I could just jump in, because I think this is a really good example to talk about because it's not just traffic. There's other, um, elements that we gotta cons- we, we don't, we'll need to consider too in terms of impact. So, uh, the list of projects we're talking about is what drives the mitigation fee. So the mitigation fee is, uh, could be ten, twelve, fifteen, uh, capital projects, uh, on a list. And there's a calculation as to what the current demand on those intersections already are or, or corridors. And then, um, what the impact of growth is going to be in the urban growth area. And then you come up with this pro rata share because you really can't ask developers to pay for existing problems. They had, they're only obligated to pay for, uh, the impacts created by their development. Uh, so what, what may happen is you're going to collect a, um, a large amount of money from a developer for their participation in, in those projects that they're impacting. Uh, one of them may be at a level of operation or level of service that, uh, you can't allow them to go forward. And, uh, as Rick alluded to, that, they may, they may have to make a disproportionate improvement to a specific intersection or a corridor. Maybe they have to add a lane, uh, or, or maybe they add a, add a whole new traffic controller because there aren't enough phases in the one that's in there, whatever it might be to increase the capacity efficiency of a particular, uh, intersection or corridor. And, um, they're gonna be able to credit some of that towards their, their, uh, obli- other obligations because it's all one system. So there is, there are some nuances as how you can do it. It's hard to answer, uh, Councilmember Serrano, your question without those, without our ordinances updated and without our, our fees in place. It's hard to add that, answer that question. It's hard to add that, answer that question accurately. You can only really do it hypothetically, but there's a lot of different ways to do it that will allow, that would allow a developer to go forward. But, but as, as Rick said, it may be such that it's, it's not going to be cheap to go forward. On the other hand, they're, depending on what the improvement might be, there's a possibility of latecomers on what improvements they make too, and that really depends on what system council puts in place and whether or not you're going to allow a latecomer on, a latecomer agreement on those type of improvements is a policy decision you're not making tonight.
Well, and again, I appreciate your thoughts, and I, I think that's, again, it's more important that we have the discussion until, you know, I guess since we're talking about roadways until the rubber hits the road, but, you know, I, I, again, for now, I think just allowing certain, the community know that we're thinking through these issues, right? Not just providing paper, 500-plus pages and maps and such, but that we're truly giving thought to how we can accomplish potential needs, current needs, and future needs, all while ensuring the city receives adequate levels of service on whether it's water or roads. Again, you know, that's part of what this type of meeting is for, right? Just to let the people know that we're thinking through this. So again, I appreciate everyone's thoughts here.
We're ready to go on to the next slide? Are there any other questions? So where do we go from here? I think you've, you know, just from this past discussion, realized your work is not done once this plan is approved. There's a lot of details that need to be figured out. One thing that I do want to emphasize is that the plan has a lot more detail about goals, policies, kind of how you address these different issues that we've been talking about, from transportation improvements to infill to parks. All of the different pieces are there as a foundation, and then you get to figure out those details. So we show you here in the schedule, the comment period that ended on the 31st of July, and of course, we're here tonight at the workshop. We've been busy really since the end of first part of August, updating the plan and the final environmental impact statement. This Thursday, there will be a hearing at the Planning Commission on the comprehensive plan, and if that moves forward, then we'll have an option for a council workshop on the 28th, where this can be a topic if desired, but action is scheduled for the 5th, for council to decide whether you're ready to approve the plan. The final EIS will be issued ahead of that. In fact, we expect unless there are any showstoppers tonight, that that will be issued tomorrow. And then, once you take action, then the next day, we'll submit that package, the urban growth area application and the comprehensive plan to Franklin County. And if they accept it, as the city has submitted it, once they approve it, then your plan will be in final form and you'll be ready for those implementation activities we've been talking about. So that's the schedule. Rick, Onesa, Jacob, anything more to add or highlights on that schedule that you want to emphasize?
Well, actually, Ben, I, yeah, I, I want to make sure council continues to be aware that the county's role in this is significant, and the county, Franklin County Planning Commission hasn't had a meeting since March, if I'm not mistaken. So we've been in contact with them, making sure that this is progressable and doable at the county level, that the county commissioners do have final decision-making authority on the urban growth area boundaries. So that's something to look ahead for, and hopefully this doesn't throw any wrenches in the gears, as they say. But while, while we're at the county and while we're in a couple of different waiting periods for submitting to the state for review, we'll be coming back with council, I'm sorry, coming back to council with some implementation activities that will be needed as part of our cyclical update in terms of code amendments.
This is Councilmember Alvarado. A quick question for Mr. White.
Go ahead, Mr. Alvarado.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just my question is, I'm assuming that we've had some contact with Franklin County staff to ensure that they, you know, you know, that there's no surprises for them as they're, as they're, they will be presenting this, and so just curious what that's looked like.
No, we, we've, we, Jacob has been in significant contact with the county as well as I have, and we've also discussed it with the Franklin County Administrator, Keith Johnson. So no, we've, we've been talking this up.
And if I could just add, several comments from Franklin County as part of the EIS and the comp plan, a lot of those were, you know, around not just the urban growth area, but things that they're going to be looking at when you submit the UGA application to them. And so we've tried to head off a lot of issues through those communications and responding to their comments.
You good with that, Mr. Alvarado? Well, you cut out on us a little bit, Mr. Alvarado, but, but I think that was a point we'll take and appreciate the collaboration there with the county. It, it is very comprehensive and it's a big document, and as Mr. Serrano has stated, I appreciate your comments and, and know that we are looking at this and, and hope that this alleviates a lot of the issues that we don't run into, that we have ran into in the past that we won't have to again. So Mr. White and all your team there with Mr. Jacobs and everybody else, thank you very much. Is there any other questions for them before we go to the next topic?
This is Councilmember.
Zara, please.
Thank you. Just a quick question, Mr. White or Mr. Gonzalez, about types of zoning. I heard that that was mentioned, that new types of zoning were requested in the comments, and is anything like that being considered by planning? And if so, what?
I think I know what you may be referring to, Councilwoman. I, I think one of the, and it might come back to the related comment on equity as well, specifically on increased density in Central Pasco and the addition of affordable housing, et cetera. And this is one of those items, I think, where staff would benefit from a, an in-depth, an in-depth study analysis of what it actually means to increase density along some of our corridors in Central Pasco, which may lend themselves to have higher densities because it's your central part of the city, and traditionally that's what we do in cities across the country. But it, it is our most dense and affordable part of the city. And so typically what happens in, in larger metropolitan areas, when you upzone, you end up eliminating the affordable properties that were there for members of the community, and it's replaced with a much more market-rate housing. And so those community members may not have the same opportunity to reside in the communities that they've been for a prolonged period of time. When it comes to zoning, specifically with more wobbly communities, we, we think we can accomplish that by focusing attention on the development standards. So are there certain corridors that have buses that run along them every 30 minutes? So your high-frequency transit corridors, where we would have wider sidewalks when new projects are put in place? Or reduce setbacks, so you have more of the public space, public life interface, more of a, that's more, that's more seen in larger areas or smaller downtown Main Street environment? I, I think that's what you're, what you're asking for in terms of the new zoning. I, I think what we have in terms of the variety of zoning pipes are appropriate. I, I think where we can make the changes are within the actual development standards, so what we actually permit in the medium-density zone, in the light commercial zone, in the central business district. I think that's where we can focus some of our attention, but also keep in mind that a part of this process is to evaluate the comprehensive plan itself. So if we do need to make changes based on trends in the city or the community, then we need to also take a look back at the comp plan and find out, do we need to make larger changes than we anticipated?
Thank you. I didn't have anything specifically that I was thinking about, just wondering about all zoning types, if there were new considerations for housing or even for commercial or industrial. So thank you for that answer.
There, if I could just, there were the new land use designations, so we have the, the tribal designation that was included, as well as the DNR reserve that was, I guess that wasn't new, but upgraded. So we, there have been some land use designations that will translate into zoning details.
Thank you.
Mr. Maloney, you had a question or a comment?
Yes, thank, yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. My question was about possibility of further changes before it hits the county level. I understand that's being presented to Planning Commission this Thursday. I know that they've been working very closely with staff over the last, oh, oh gosh, probably two years now. Is there any expected discussion and changes at that point in time? What's, what's the, what, 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 what comes from that next Planning Commission meeting?
And Mr. Maloney, what, what will happen this coming Thursday, we anticipate at least, is the Planning Commission will make a formal recommendation to council. The commission has seen this a number of times, and I am not aware of any significant changes that they will ask staff to accommodate or direct staff to accommodate. Jacob, I think that's probably your perspective as well. Yeah, I, I, I think, I, I don't see anything in terms of red flags, or as Ben noted earlier, showstoppers in that regard.
Okay, thank you.
Well, with that, if I'm not mistaken, going back to the schedule, it looks like we'll have to be accepting or approving of this comprehensive plan here in the next couple of weeks. So Mr. White and Jacob and, and all you involved, thank you very much for this work. Yeah, it's a, it's a big one, and so really appreciate all the work you're putting into it and hope, hopefully it works out. So we'll be moving forward. Is there any other question or comment anybody wants to share before we go to the next item of discussion?
I, I would like to just add, Mr. Mayor, that on behalf of the consultant team, that it was a great experience working with, with staff and working with all of you, so thank you.
Well, thank you.
Thanks.
Appreciate, appreciate your efforts. Okay.
Thanks.
So with that, thank you very much. We'll move right along to our next item of discussion, city surplus property. Mr. Ratkay, do you want to take the lead on that?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. Good evening, Zach Ratkay, ACS Director. On the last number of years, as council is aware, we've identified a number of city-owned properties that were surplus to civic need and therefore placed on the, placed on the market for sale. Parcels in the surplus pool have remained, have ranged from civic use sites to really remaindered parcels after roadways have been realigned. Recently, as you can see on the screen, staff has compiled all of our city-owned property onto one map, and this includes properties for the city hall that we're sitting in currently, to all the parks, to public utility facilities, et cetera. But we also wanted to assess parcels that would still remain surplus to the city needs. In addition, the compilation of the city-owned property map is to identify the baseline data for total owned city acreage, the use of each acreage, build a future strategy on the utilization of public buildings and properties, and identify a future maintenance strategy and sort of a, a way to identify resource allocation in the future. So in this first installment this evening, we want to share just really quickly what has been identified as surplus to the city needs and assess the need for a master plan strategy for two parcels in particular. So the beginning property here, this is the last remaining lot from our first iteration of identified properties. This is what we call the Heritage Site. This parcel was a subject of a previous sale effort that did not go through last December. It's 200, or, excuse me, 2.25 acres, not 225 acres, and zoned R1A with a future land use designation of mixed residential and commercial. Future intentions for this corridor generally conform to what you see at Heritage Boulevard south of Lewis Street. Residential, some potential for new commercial and everything that could be really seen in between. Once the comprehensive plan, which is the previous item this evening, is adopted, this parcel could be allowed for zoning changes to accommodate all manner of residential uses, along with a diverse mix of commercial and potentially office as well. Since this parcel has been on the market previously to the, the last visitation here at council in December and leading up to this point, there has been some modest interest by the buying public, mainly for residential uses. Staff recommends that this parcel remain on the market and declare a surplus to city needs, and we would just keep with that same intent until a buyer emerges. The second set of properties on this evening's discussion, we identified two additional parcels. They're not partialized out yet, they're still includes, included within the Geisa Stadium property, but they've been tried, identified as primary targets for new usage. These two parcels are known as the pad sites at the Geisa Stadium parking lot. As part of a future visioning for this area, we are working on a capital improvement project to upgrade Geisa Stadium, as you're aware. We've recently commenced the re, reconstruction of the batting cages within the ballpark and trying to bring the forward that. As part of the future visioning process, we've identified these sites as surplus, but really not in the traditional sense that Pasco has done before. Staff intends to study this area, mainly identifying what pedestrian connections we can foster between these sites and the stadium, as well as the Pasco Soccer Complex to the east, the softball complex to the southwest, the track, excuse me, Hapo Center, and connections further west to the hotel and restaurant corridor as well. We would look to do parking lot improvements in this area as well and see what we can tie in with this master planned effort in this area for future, future usage for the pad sites. While these could conceivably be sold fairly quickly in the near future, staff recommends that we take this more strategic approach to identify a, a, a pretty good revenue generating use in that area. This approach would involve a collective effort, and our staff plans include bringing in a diverse staff group, along with utilizing the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board to determine really the vision and future priority areas for this site. So we have these three properties that we've identified for surplus, and we would like to, staff's recommendation at this evening would be to have the Heritage Site remain as the sole property we have left out for sale. And if we have concurrence from council this evening, we will have a more formal applica, or excuse me, a more formal item brought forth next week with the council.
Thank you, Mr. Ratkay. Any comments from the council? So yeah, it, so I guess I would share that I'm good with the Heritage Boulevard surplus property.
Okay.
The other two definitely have some, some work to do to see. I know at one time we were thinking about putting a community center there, or just that was thought of it, but definitely have to really think about what we're doing there since, you know, all the traffic that it generates going through there for the parking lot of the stadium. But yes, I, I guess we just need to continue, so I would have been in agreement with the more strategic plan to, to see what we can do with this property here. I guess I just don't know what opportunities may come up, but, but I would definitely be in agreement of that strategic plan you're talking about. Anybody else have any comments?
This is Councilmember Roach, and I just recently got to tour this facility, well, not a facility, but this lot at the Geisa Stadium with Mr. Ratkay, and our conversation was around other larger cities and what they've done near their ballparks. One of the areas that I used to live in was in Boston, and so the Fenway around there is surrounded by pubs, restaurants, bowling alleys, other sorts of recreation. And so we were talking about San Diego, around their ballpark, and just what potential this could hold for a city of Pasco. could hold for a city of Pasco. And so I'm fully in support of researching what we can do with it and totally on board with the recommendation for, from staff about the Heritage Boulevard.
Thank you, Mrs. Roach. I do have a quick question, Mr. Ratkay. Do you know when, when this was built, was, was the, that entrance going to be the primary entrance for the ballpark or was it going to be the street there between the track, Trader Park and, and that property?
You know, Mr. Mayor, I cannot speak to those intentions, but I can certainly look through our department archives and, and contact some, some folks that have been with the city a little longer than I have to, to see what that original intention was.
Yeah, because I
I think it's exit only now.
Yeah, and I was just looking into that because I can see that it'd probably be a lot safer if either that entrance to that street there or maybe perhaps the one over at the new Hapo Center would be the main entrance to the ballpark so that the traffic, I mean, that's pretty dangerous when people are coming in and out of there at that level of concentration for cars when, when the games are, are going and taking place when the cars are entering and leaving. So it'd be curious to that, but evidently, but obviously open to that, to that planning from the, from the staff. So any other comments?
This is Thanks. So my only question was going to be in regards to the kind of that sports tourism sort of master planning that we had come in front of us, the transcitywide effort there. And there's discussion of some pretty significant increased use requiring a significant amount of investment, no joke, no joking there, but to, that would improve those, those fields and really become a, a regional center for, for soccer. I imagine that that would also require additional parking, so I'm hoping that that will be well taken into account when staff is considering what to do with this property, make sure that we're, we have the capacity for the future designs and desires of this area. It is a nice regional sports area. I'm a big fan of, of, of having a good restaurant and pub facilities next to sporting facilities as well, but just want to make sure that we're taking that well into account to make sure we're not, we're not shortcutting or undercutting ourselves later. Thank you.
And staff will definitely be looking into that.
Mr. Serrano?
Okay, thank you. I've waited my turn apparently and I won't interrupt. But as, as Councilman Roach was talking about, the tourism and the way that we could build up around the stadium, I love that concept, but part of our analysis needs to be whether or not there will be a team. So part of the research does need to be, one, what will happen with the MLB contract and the stadium and the team? And we may have answers to that here in our backyard, but obviously this year it's not going to happen, but they were already looking at cutting several teams from minor league baseball as of next year prospectively. So we need to find out where, where we can fall on that, which it'd be a hard, it'd be a heartbreaker if we lost that team. But as city council, we need to be prudent with the resources and consider that to build up that area for, to, you know, jump onto sports tourism and not have a team might not go too well. So it's my only thought there.
Thank you, Mr. Serrano. I know we've been working hard sending letters of support to the MLB to, to do everything we can to keep the Dust Devils here. But yes, you, you got a good point, Mr. Serrano, and I'm sure Mr. Ratkay will be taking that into consideration.
Yeah, we can work with the Dust Devils this week and see if we can provide an update to council next week on that, that issue.
Yep.
Thank you.
All right, well, thank you for that. Anybody else before we go to the next item? Wonderful, then we'll move right on. Thank you, Mr. Ratkay. We'll move right on to item C, Axon Officer Safety Plan and Five-Year Contract Renewal. Mr., is Ken, Chief Ken Roski on the line?
I am. Can you hear me, Mr. Mayor?
I can. Good evening.
So thank you, thank you, Mayor Martinez and council members. Captain Bill Paramore is going to continue with this presentation. He spent the last six or eight months researching the components of this project as well as the contract that you see submitted. So he will take over from here and give you some more, some more information and details on it.
Good evening.
Hello, council. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yep.
Perfect. So like the chief said, I've been doing a little bit of research over the past six months to kind of look at this need to revisit our current Axon contract. If you look at the proposal that we put before you, you'll note that for the most part over the last 20 years or so, we have kind of piecemeal together our camera systems, both in the car and now our body worn camera program, our, our TASER, which is our less lethal option that our officers have on their duty belt system, and then also our interview room cameras inside the facility for criminal investigations. What we're looking to do with this contract is to combine all of those resources into one lump contract. The ease of that is going to assist us with the public records side of things. So all of the video and evidence will be located in one house. That way, when it does come time to send stuff to the prosecutor's office or answer any public records request, we'll be able to do that easily. What you'll see here is, is there's an update to our, there'll be an update to our in-car cameras. That system is end of life. It will upgrade our, upgrade our TASER program to the newest, latest model, the TASER seven. We're currently using two models, the X26 and the X26P. Another component of all this is, and one of the bigger things to take away from this is with our, us being a very transparent organization within the region, it's going to take the human element out of our law enforcement officers activating their body worn camera system and their in-car camera system. The TASER will have a specific battery assigned to it to where if, if activated, it will automatically turn on every camera, their body camera and their in-car camera. When they pull their firearm from their holster, there will be a new system in place where we'll automatically activate their camera on their body and their patrol car. When they activate the emergency lights in their vehicle, it will activate their body camera and their in-car camera. And the great thing about it is, is it will also activate any other camera in and around the area 100 feet, I believe, of that activation. So if there are multiple officers in the area, any one of those three things I discussed earlier will automatically trigger and activate that camera. If you look at, at cost comparisons over the next five years, it comes out to be just about cost neutral, I believe, a five-year increase of about 16,000 if you look at your spreadsheet. Overall, we think this is going to be a huge benefit to the department. Like again, it kind of lumps a lot of our technology pieces all into one, one contract. As it, as it heads right now, we are running very low and short on data as it relates to our current body worn camera program and, and being able to retain those records. So this is a, this is a need. So I guess I'm happy to answer any questions if there are any from council.
So our current contract, Mr. Paramore, is that, when, when is that going to end? Or is it just already full?
Yeah, we still have about three and a half, three and a half years on that contract. The problem is, is that current contract is just for, it's just for the body worn cameras. And initially when we brought that, when we, when we started that program two years ago, we had a cap of 12 terabytes of data and we are already there. So if we can continue on with where we're at, we're looking at somewhere between 40 and 50 terabytes of data that we're going to need to have to maintain our current records as required by law. And so that, that would be a significant increase. So we have to basically increase that already and this contract does that.
Okay. Any other questions from council?
This is Councilmember Roach. I have a question. Is it based on data storage or is it based on amount of time?
So, so both, right? So we are required per statute to keep certain records for a specific period of time. And it depends on the label. It depends on what crime you're looking at. So DUIs, I think we're required to keep all those videos for up to 10 years. Other videos we're required to keep for five years. So the problem with that is because we're two years in and we're already at the two ter, 12, the 12 terabytes of data that we're, that we were allowed to have for our current contract. So we are, we are going to blow that number out of the water any day now. And unfortunately, we still have three years left in the cycle of this contract. So we're looking at some specific, some pretty high numbers as we continue on here. We are not allowed to, per law, get rid of the videos that we currently have stored.
So would it, would the city face the same issue in the next couple of years in case with the new, the new features of activating once, when a gun is out of the holster or when a TASER is used? Does that, does that mean that more video storage and data would be needed and we would hit that threshold early as well? Or is there something in place to make sure that we don't get to that?
So that's a, that's a great, that's a great, that's a great question. One of the great components of moving to this new contract is, is that we would have unlimited data storage. So there's no cap. So we are, we would be set to, to basically use as much data as we needed and that would be beneficial to the city and to the police department.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Well, I, I'm all for making sure we have what we need, Mr. Paramore, and do what we got to do, I guess, you know, during these difficult times and trying to be fiscally responsible. I guess, I guess the only thing that kind of rubs the wrong way is the fact that we'll probably be paying another couple of years on a contract that we're not going to be using because we're going to switch over to, to the, to the new contract, correct?
So when we, when we sign, if, if the council approves and we sign this new contract, our old contract is null and void. So we're no longer repaying on that, on that old contract. We'll just start a new five-year contract and that old contract will get torn out.
Oh, wonderful.
So we will not, yeah, so we will not, we will not pay on the, on the old one.
Oh, great. Well, that, that clears it up for me. Any other questions or comments?
Just a comment. Thank you, Captain Paramore, for the information. Always very informative.
All right. Well, thank you very much, Mr. Paramore and Chief Roski. We'll be looking forward to seeing that in the next meeting for approval.
Thank you for your time.
All right. Next on the agenda, water rights contract number two with the Washington State Department of Ecology. And Mr. Wardley, I understand you have some more water rights for us?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Tonight, we are here to talk about a very exciting subject called water rights. It is a very technical issue. I'm going to try to keep it as minimal as possible, but I wanted to be able to share with you why we are coming back for another contract with ecology for another 5,000 acre feet of water rights. As you may recall, we came to council back in January of this year and we asked for approval, which council provided, on a contract with ecology for an initial 5,000 acre feet of water rights from the Lake Roosevelt project. And tonight, you're probably asking the question, why are we doing it again? And since we didn't give much of a presentation last time, I thought I would give you a little bit of an overview tonight to show that for you. So if we could start that presentation, that would be great. I think most of you have it in your packet. Ah, I have control over it. I apologize. Okay, so tonight, really quick, I know it's been a long evening already, so I'll try to get through this as quickly as possible. We're going to talk a little bit initially about water rights definitions, so you understand what it is that we're going to be doing and why we're doing it. We're going to talk about the different water right types, the uses associated with those types. I'm going to give you a real quick overview of the maps we have of the city water rights. I'm going to talk about the status of the city's water rights in the different areas that we have. I'm going to quickly mention a little thing called the quad city water right, which is kind of important. And then we're going to talk about the ecology agreement number two and why we're proposing to enter into this agreement. So there are many elements to what a water right is. And this slide kind of shows the four specific elements that ecology looks for with every water right. The first one, the water right defines a specific amount of water used. And usually it's in the form of a maximum rate or a total amount of water used per year. The second is the type of use for that water right. And it can be either irrigation use, municipal use, industrial use, or other such uses. So a water right is defined by the use as well as the amount. Not only that, water rights have a specific location associated with them. So you can have an amount, you can have a type of use, and you can have a place where you can put that water, okay? So that can either be a large area like a city boundary. It can be a corridor section or a section or like a farm circle, or it can be an individual parcel, probably a large parcel. But each of the water rights has an identified place of location. And then it identifies this timeframe in which the water right can be used. You can either identify it during the irrigation season for a part of the year, or you can identify it as for all year long. There are different types of water rights. The first one is a surface water diversion. I think most of us are familiar with this. Most of our water rights that go to our water treatment plants come directly from the Columbia River. And this is called a wa, surface water diversion water right. And so we have them at the West Pasco Water Treatment Plant. We have an intake at the Butterfield Water Treatment Plant. And we have the old intake at, near the West Pasco Water Treatment Plant as well. So those are the three surface water diversions that we have. The city also has approximately 41 groundwater wells throughout the city. Now, most of the groundwater wells are for irrigation only. So all of our treated water comes from the surface water diversion and goes directly into our water treatment plants and then goes into our water systems. Now, just in case we run into these terms, these water rights are measured in these units that are shown here at the bottom of the slides, either cubic feet per second and gallons per minute. Those are the two flow rates that are usually used. And then the total volume of water is actually an acre feet per year. And there's a little conversion there in case you want to run some numbers quickly in your head. So Pasco's type of water use are as follows. We have domestic municipal water. As I mentioned earlier, that's the treated water and we get most of that from, or we get all of it from the Columbia River. We have our irrigation water utility, which is a separate piped system, pump system and storage system. We have both treated and non-treated irrigation water. Some of our city residences are tied into a separate irrigation system, which is non-potable water, and some of our areas are tied into the potable water system and used for irrigation. And the source of those are either going to be the Columbia River and/or the groundwater wells that I mentioned earlier. The reuse facility, the PWRF and the farms, they use groundwater and those are all irrigation water rights. And then the city parks also have groundwater irrigation water rights as well. So those are the four areas that Pasco typically sees. And in the photo that you see there, you see the stand pipes and the reservoirs that we have. The one on the, I guess it'd be the left, the, the totally straight up and down one, that is the one that's used for our irrigation system and that's our older water tank. And then the other one with a stand pipe and the big reservoir on top, that is our potable water storage reservoir. So this map shows the points of withdrawal and diversion. You can see that the little triangle areas down by the Columbia River are the three areas where we pull water out of the Columbia River for both of the water treatment plants. And then all of the other areas you see there are the groundwater water wells that are used. These ones up here are for the reuse facility and then all these other ones tie into our irrigation system and provide water for the folks that are tied to irrigation. This map shows you the location of where the water rights can be placed. So this is an example of how, where any particular water right has a specific place of use and it can be a section, a parcel. These are the parcels and sections that those water rights can, where the water rights can be used. And technically, the water rights from those wells are not supposed to be used anywhere else. So it gets to be a little bit restrictive. And so we're going to talk a little bit about that. The blue ones that you see in this table right here are the ones, let me make sure I get my notes correct. That says, if I could read it. Those are the irrigation ones and the green ones Those are the irrigation ones, and the green ones down here in the bottom are the ones that are are the wells up at the reuse facility. Okay? So I wanted to give you an idea of how much water the city uses throughout the years, and so this is just to show a trend through the years of the total amount of water. That the city of Pasco uses, and in twenty nineteen, we used a total of four point eight four billion gallons of water. That was treated through our water treatment plant, so this is the potable water number that we used, it's a lot of water each year, we have several. Agricultural uh processors that use a lot of water, now, why there's the trend, I don't, I'm not sure. I wasn't able to dig into it a little bit where we had higher numbers in twenty fifteen, and we're about at that same amount now in twenty nineteen. I would have to ask some folks who've been around a lot longer than I have about why that trend is that way. So, let's get into the water right status for the city of Pasco. I've got this chart divided up into the different water rights that were shown on the previous slide, municipal irrigation, reuse and parks. The first line is the permitted use, these are the water rights that Pasco has, and then the middle line is the twenty nineteen usage. Now, you can see in some of these, like the municipal one, the usage in twenty nineteen was actually greater than the amount permitted. And that is the same with our irrigation system, we used more irrigation water than what is permitted. Our reuse facility, we use less than the amount of water rights we have available, and our park system used. About half of what the available water rights are. We also added to this list the future needs, when we look at the comprehensive plan. And we look at the future growth, and it's based on the comprehensive plan that you heard about earlier this evening. We projected out what the uses are needed for in those areas in twenty forty-eight, I think it is. And so you can see that our growth is gonna continue to per need additional water rights. And I wanted to make a note on that asterix for the municipal right, that fourteen thousand five hundred and twenty-three, that number includes. The five thousand acre feet that the council previously approved earlier this year. So you can see how we were a little bit further behind before we even purchased those water rights. And now we're getting caught up, but we wanna get a little bit ahead of where we are right now to accommodate future growth. So here's another way of looking at it, and this is a chart that basically shows the same numbers as before, but in chart mode. And so you can see the numbers as they relate to the permitted uses, the twenty nineteen usages and the future needs. Now, one of the things you'll notice is that the PWRF has more water rights than what we project in the future. And one of the things that we are working on right now is we are, have put in about forty applications. To change the water rights on our irrigation wells. Both within the city and at the reuse facility, to change those water right uses. From irrigation to municipal rights. And by doing that, that does two things that benefits the city. One is, we can use the water anywhere within the city boundary or within the reuse facility, we're not limited. To those areas that were specifically identified in the original permit, so we can spread the usage out. Second, what it does is it preserves the water rights, and what I mean by that is. If we don't use all the water rights, we don't lose any of the water rights. And water rights can be lost if they are not used within five years. So by turning them into municipal water rights, we are able to keep them and use them in more areas. So we are doing that right now, we've got forty applications in and they're going through the process right now of getting changed.
Mr. Wardley?
Yes.
Quick question, so if we go to the future needs.
Yes.
Are we safely gonna use, so we don't lose if we purchase them now?
That is correct.
Okay.
Yes, by anything that we buy, hope, uh the ones for ecology will come to us as municipal water rights. So we will not lose those.
And we will have no problems using that in the next five years?
I believe that is correct. That's true, they are leased.
Okay.
We're buying them on an annual basis.
Mr. Worley, this is Councilmember Roach, I have a question about the Pasco Water Reuse Facility, are the future needs that are. Uh projected here, uh including um the possibility of land Weston coming on?
That's a very interesting question, because depending on who we bring in. And how we decide to uh reconstruct the pre-treatment facility. How clean we make the water before we send it out onto the farm fields will determine how much fresh water we pull out of the ground. To irrigate the crop fields, so there's a lot of question about where we're gonna go with the water rights related to the reuse facility. I don't know if that answered your question.
Uh I guess somewhat, but I I mean, I still appreciate the answer, thank you.
There'll be more information come on that as we progress on the reuse facility, how about that?
Okay, I'll stay tuned to that.
Okay. Let's see, let's move on, so the other issue that I wanted to mention is the quad city water right. And you may have heard of this, and this is a water right that is given or given by the Department of Ecology to all four cities. We all four share in the amount of water rights that are available. In this chart, you can see that the blue uh column is equally distributed, all of the water rights associated with the quad city water rights. Are equally distributed to all the cities. The the orange bar on that chart shows that the other three cities currently do not use. Any of the water rights from the quad city water rights, and that is because they currently have additional water rights in other places. And Pasco, because we're a little bit behind, we are currently using more than our allocated amount. Now, it's not a bad thing for us to go over, because there's plenty of water rights to be used, and the other cities aren't using them. But we wanna be in a position where we're using the amount that's allocated to us, and the other cities have their allocations available to them whenever they want them.
Do we pay for those when we use them?
No, this, this is, this water right was given to the, uh and I can't remember Dave if it was purchased. Or if it was given?
Yeah, it was purchased, uh pretty uh complicated negotiation before my time, but uh.
Okay.
All the cities worked together, hence the name, the quad city.
Yeah. And and there was some, there was some mitigation that had to be done, but Department of Ecology mitigated that with. Water rights that other cities along the Columbia River gave up, so that the quad cities could have those water rights instead. So it's, it it was a very complicated issue, but it got worked out, so. Any other questions on?
Well, I guess I'm just wondering, you know, I definitely need to have our own and and be uh. Uh you're prudent to ensuring that we're gonna have enough.
Right.
But I guess I don't understand if it's free and it's for the quad cities and they're not using it, why don't we use it? If we need it.
We can, but then if they get into a situation where they're growing faster and they're utilizing all of their current water rights and they want to come to this one. We would have to give.
Sure.
Theirs back to them, and then we would have to find it elsewhere.
It just seems like there, like there's plenty of room, but but I'm just saying, I mean, it it's it's a backup plan.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. And and none of the three cities have asked for it, we just wanna make sure that we're being good stewards and good neighbors with our sister cities.
Sure.
So. Let's see, so the back earlier in twenty nineteen, the city applied for. Uh available water rights, even though we had the previous five thousand acre feet, we had heard. That ecology had these other water rights becoming available, and ecology knows that Pasco is in need of additional water rights. So they're working with us to try to find them, so we submitted an application in twenty nineteen. There's a copy of the letter that we got from them saying they've accepted our application, and then the draft contract, which is. The same contract is what council passed previously in January, is the same agreement that would apply here as well. And for this one, the results are the same as the previous one, five thousand acre feet per year of uh water rights. It is a municipal use, the location for the use would be anywhere within the Pasco Water Service Area. The specific period of time would be January to December, and the cost is a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars per year at thirty-five. Dollars per acre foot per year, and I can tell you that amount is the smallest amount. We will ever see for water rights. Uh as a comparison, there are some additional water rates that we have heard about from the department or the Bureau of Reclamation. And they are currently going for sixty-eight dollars, I believe it was, somewhere in that.
Yeah, that's about it, I mean, to to purchase five thousand feet, even. That uh I think about a seven hundred and fifty dollar per acre foot, which is difficult to find, even if we could find five thousand feet, we're talking close to nine million dollars.
If we were to, yes, cuz if we're to purchase it, it's seventeen hundred and fifty dollars per acre foot. If you were to purchase it on the open market today, so this this lease will take us out, I think last time we calculated it out.
Fifty.
Fifty years before that amount of money is equivalent to what we would purchase it at.
So that's not taking into account um present value of money or things like that.
So if council agrees to move forward with this, what will that do to help Pasco with their water rights? On the left, you'll see that it will bump our municipal permitted rights up from fourteen thousand acre feet per year. Up to nineteen thousand acre feet per year, which puts us in a pretty good position, and it would reduce our. Use of the quad city water rights down to what our allocated amount is. And so that amount of additional water rights would currently cover all of our needs now and provide us a little bit of growth. As we continue to go find more water rights. So in summary, the population growth is increasing our water usage. And that increased water usage requires more water rights, currently, we are using more quad what quad city water rights than we have allocated. And recently purchased ecology water rights have already been counted into the numbers you've seen tonight. Staff recommends that we move forward with approving the agreement with ecology. For the additional five thousand acre feet per year of water rates. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Well, thank you for that thorough review, Mr. Worley, appreciate it. Um it it almost feels like that that we don't have many options other than. Uh I guess, uh Mr. Zabel, as long as we're fiscally responsible and we have it in our in our budget to. To purchase these, I mean, it's almost like we have to have it anyway, um but.
It it's a planned expenditure. Director and I had talked about this when we prepared the budget two years ago, that we'd eventually have a purchased uh water line item.
Well, thank you for your foresight on that, anybody, anybody have any comments or questions for staff?
This is Serrano, I'm gonna ask the question Alex asked, uh and I may have missed it, are these perfected or do we still have to go through that process?
Are they what?
Perfected, these are.
Oh.
Yeah, these are, they're perfected, they're good to go, they're they're leased from, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Okay, Mr. Worley, with them, we'll pre, looking forward to, it will be on next week's agenda?
Yep.
Okay, well, it sounds like it's something that we feel we need to do, it's planned and uh.
Is it Councilmember Alvarado?
Yes, Mr. Alvarado. Go ahead, Mr. Alvarado.
Uh pretty significantly delayed. Uh so I'll say it might come.
Significantly delayed.
Yeah. Okay, well, we apologize for the uh technical difficulty there, Mr. Alvarado. With that, um maybe you can ask Dave or or Steve offline maybe tomorrow or a little bit later.
Anytime.
Alright, well, thank you for that report and thank you for the more education on this and uh looking forward to to getting this to go through.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Worley. Alright, next on the agenda is the review uh for the council goals, we all uh. Did everybody receive one of these, Mr. Zabel? And uh go ahead, Mr. Zabel.
So uh again, I appreciate council's uh indulgence to push through this this evening rather than uh. Waiting for the following workshop a couple of weeks out, uh to simplify your review and to take advantage of the work. You've already put in uh. Uh we provided you a document tonight, it when, kinda simplified it with two columns, on the left side. Is a column, uh those are the goals presented at your September tenth workshop to this last Thursday. And then on the right side of that same document are your recommended goal. Um a recommended goal language uh that uh we put together based on input and direction and. And the council discussion, so uh you'll note many of the squares are shaded, uh which is to differentiate. Uh what you've already accepted uh during our discussion, uh and uh. Those those would be the gray ones, so the gray shading indicates the accepted language. Uh if you're, we're talking a lot about numbers tonight, eighteen of the forty squares we have to go over tonight are gray shaded, so. We're almost halfway there, and then the white uh or no shaded uh or non-shaded squares. Uh those indicate a prior goal uh that that has been modified, and then the blue shading is one of your new goals. Uh in the proposed final uh draft form. So it sometimes happens uh when we're trying to to uh force an issue and and push it a little harder maybe than we'd like to, we, I did find a glitch. Uh after these were delivered to you, so I got a, I do have a PowerPoint slide and we talk about economic vitality. Uh where I needed to work over a couple of the bullet points that didn't quite make it into this printed version that you have, but I, PowerPoint should come across. Pretty well, and I I think uh reflect, I think uh very accurately the council's uh discussion, so it's just three, three of those bullet points. And with that, uh with council's indulgence, I will go over the the white and the blue squares. Uh assuming that uh the shaded are, we're good to go, so. Uh the first one, not a lot of change to that one from our discussion. Um that, uh under quality of life, again, just the use of uh block grant money. Use of uh CBDG and other public and private capital to revitalize older neighborhoods. And safe routes to essential services, so we had a little bit of discussion on that already. Uh and I'll just keep going, if if somebody wants to stop me, just stop me, uh given the time. Uh continued effort, second goal, continued efforts towards design, citing, programming needs and site selection for a community center. And pursue acquisition of land for a future community park, now I I. I know we have a community center discussion down below, but you do have specific money for this particular one, the. From the sale of the senior center, so trying to keep, give it its own identity as a project, but we would still be doing that with the uh. The goal, a little bit lower, we'll talk about in a few minutes, uh uh that's in one of your grade shaded ones, I'll mention it down there when we go by it. So the next unshaded one, the white one, coordination with the Pasco Facilities District. To develop a public education campaign, financial analysis. And prepare ballot measure concerning the development of a regional aquatic facility for consideration by the people. Did I added, uh based on council's conversation, added the public education campaign piece and financial analysis, which is a requirement. Uh by commerce, uh uh anyway, so we needed to, we need to make sure we included that. Uh next, uh unshaded is construction completion of animal control facility. Skipping down to the first blue uh item, that item, uh you'll note the bullet over to the left had to do with um. Affordable housing, it actually did not get uh moved to the community center, that it got combined below with the last bullet in this section. So I'll I'll touch on that when we get there, but just kinda keep in mind uh strategies for promotion of uh. Affordable housing, so next, next blue one below that, collaborating with regional and community partners. Uh to evaluate and implement strategies to reduce the incidence of homelessness. Uh I think that discussion was uh mainly uh centered around pulling in uh partnerships, particularly regionally as well as. Uh local, uh next bullet, updating design standards for the development.
Yes.
On the uh homelessness uh bullet there, I thought that was the one we were gonna move to community safety, uh not the one above.
Ah, okay.
Uh maybe I'm misremembering, but that was my recollection of the conversation.
Well, since you just said it, I think you're correct. Okay, so let's see, uh thank you, so back to the updating design standards. For development of new neighborhoods and redevelopment to promote greater neighborhood cohesion. Through design elements such as walkability, aesthetics, sustainability. And community gathering spaces, so I think that captures, uh, council's discussion on that, uh, particular. Uh, goal. And then I'd mentioned earlier about affordable housing. We had kinda combined that with, uh, the Housing Action Plan. And, uh, came up with a bullet, team with local and regional partners to develop a housing act, action plan. With strategies, excuse me, with an emphasis on strategies to promote affordable housing. So if there's no other changes other than moving, uh, the homeless, uh, homelessness, uh, bullet. To, uh, community safety, uh, I think we're pretty good there. So moving on to financial sustainability. Uh, we have a couple, should we have one unshaded bullet here for goal? Which is, uh, ongoing evaluation of costs, processes. And performance associated with delivery of city services, including customer feedback and satisfaction. Staffing, facilities and partnership opportunities. So I think that captures the, the customer service, uh, discussion that we had, and I, there's also another bullet, uh, a little later relating to. Culture of customer service. So community safety would include the bullet, uh, Councilmember Maloney mentioned just a minute ago. But the first unshaded one, development of a police comprehensive. Strategic master plan through a transparent process. To evaluate future service levels of the department to assure sustainability, public safety. In crime control over the next five to ten years. This is basically taken from the draft goal, it was in the issue paper per the suggestion of, uh, Councilmember Maloney. Uh, at the retreat the other night. Next, uh, unshaded, uh, is leveraging and expanding partnerships to maintain and enhance behavioral health services to community members in crisis. In police and fire services. So this is, uh, basically our embedded mental health folks and our, uh. Resource guide, uh, that's employed at the, at the fire department assisting with, uh. With our medical officer and, and, uh, paramedics. And then the last unshaded bullet in that section. Leveraging infrastructure database of sidewalks, streetlights, pavement conditions. Evaluate policies and methods to address needs and inequities. And that gets us through community safety. So community transportation network, uh, first unshaded, uh, has to do with a goal that council. Uh, I had actually made it probably too specific, council pulled it back to the original goal. Uh, continued emphasis on improvements to Road sixty-eight. And Interstate one eighty-two, Burden Boulevard corridor to improve operation and safety. Uh, recognizing that while we are doing some projects this year, there's plenty of work to do out there. Uh, next one, uh, data-driven proactive neighborhood trunk calming efforts. And following that, uh, that goal had to do with, um. C I, uh, Oregon Avenue, so we deleted that, uh. Uh, for the, for the reasons I suggested Thursday night, council went along with that. Uh, it's still in our CIP, still, our capital improvement, uh, plan, it's still in our transportation improvement plan. Uh, secondly, our last goal in that section, completion of a transportation system master plan and utilization of the recommendations to develop policies, regulations, programs. And projects to provide for greater connectivity, strategic investment. Mobility, multimodal systems, accessibility, efficiency and safety. So a lot of really good things we're gonna get out of that traffic, uh. Safety master plan, okay, so economic vitality. So we'll put the, and hopefully, can you, can you read that on your monitors? Councilmembers?
Yes.
Okay, good, okay, so the first bullet, uh, on the top. Would be downtown revitalization efforts. To promote and encourage economic vitality by supporting downtown revital, revitalization efforts of DPDA. Post-COVID restart, city initiatives such as downtown master plan process. And sign code updates, and what you probably had noticed is, uh, we're pulling one of the, we're pulling downtown. Per the council's suggestion, kinda combining a couple of those goals. Uh, and considering downtown master planning process as a economic development activity. Or at least an activity that's gonna promote economic development. Uh, so past the shaded one, we're down to, to, um, a combined goal. Of completing the comprehensive land use plan update and broadmore plan efforts. Adopt urban growth area expansion alternatives. Implement, uh, adopted long-range planning efforts with appropriate analysis and implementation of planning actions. Including zoning changes, phased, sign code update and development regulations and standards. So that was a lot of what we talked about tonight. Uh, next one, uh, has to do with, uh, in part customer service, but also. Um, small business outreach and so forth, increased efforts to promote. The community as a desirable place for commercial and industrial development by promoting small business outreach and assistance. Predictability and project review and excellent customer service. Uh, partner, next one, partnership with and encourage DNR. Uh, to facilitate development of the remaining state-owned property at Road sixty-eight. And, uh, SR one eighty-two. And, uh, that actually, it does actually broaden that goal a little bit. Uh, this really pertained to the property south of one eighty-two, but there is a triangle piece, uh, just to the west of Lowe's that's. DNR-owned property as well, so that, that could apply to that property and work. If you notice, there's a pivot on that property, uh. To go back to Steve's water rights discussion, we're working with, uh, DNR right, right now to protect some, project. Perfect some water rights on that piece, so that's why the pivot's on there. Okay, next goal, uh, and that's your second bullet. Uh, continued coordination with the Port of Pasco to complete and implement a waterfront zoning plan. And provide for public infrastructure, and that was a, the infrastructure piece was a, a piece, uh. I think, uh, Councilmember Alvarado, uh, mentioned, uh. Making sure that that was in place so that project could move forward quickly. And then, uh, the last blue shaded bullet, or the only blue shaded bullet in that section. Active partnerships in the planning and development of strategies to promote tourism. And deployment of assets to spur economic activity. Again, I believe that was, uh, Councilmember Alvarado's, uh, drive on that one. So if there are no questions in that section, we move on to community identity. And, uh, the first, uh, goal. Identify opportunities and enhance community identity cohesion and image through continued efforts at community surveying. Through traditional methods such as we've been doing. And the application of new technologies was something we brought up the other night. Uh, the next unshaded goal. Uh, continued efforts of the community identity image enhancement campaign. To include promotion of community and organizational successes. And, uh, actually, that's the last goal, the other two. Uh, one was combined with the goal above, the one having to do with the enhancement campaign. And then, uh, the other piece, uh, relating to inclusivity commission had gotten, was moved to quality of life. So with that, I think we've kinda walked through all of council's, uh. Goals that we had left to, to work on tonight and, uh, happy to answer any questions, if not, we'll, we'll be prepared to bring this back, uh, for final council adoption. Next week.
Thank you, Mr. Zabel. And thank you, council, for, uh, all the work. Um, all the time we put in to, to come up with these and, uh, thank Mr. Dave, how, how do you pronounce his last name?
Dave Mercer, yes.
Yes.
Dave Mercer.
Yeah, Mercer, that, uh, please, uh, send him our.
Will do.
Or thank, uh.
Well, we'll send him a check as well.
Yeah, okay, you're right. All right, any other questions, comments before we move on? All right, then we go into miscellaneous council discussion. Uh, the only thing that I would like to bring up under miscellaneous council discussion is. Uh, hopefully, we still got the, the Boy Scouts and the community members listening. To please remind everyone to complete their census, it's, uh, it. We got until the end of September to get our censuses in, I didn't get the percentage of where we were at today. But, uh, would encourage everyone, uh, to. To remind everybody to complete their census, I, I just, this is a rough number, but if I'm not mistaken, it's ten thousand dollars per person. Over a ten-year period that we're leaving out on the table by not accounting for everyone, so. It is in everybody's best interest to, to get the census in and get accounted for so that, uh, we can. Utilize as much help as we can, and it would help everybody out for that, Mr. Zabel, do you have anything else?
I did, I did just have one item, I, I thought it was, uh, something council may wanna be aware of and, uh. COVID, we've talked about all the different partnerships and, you know, we've had some discussions even during our goal setting about the relationships and level of coordination that's occurred. So one thing that I, I think would be of interest to council is, uh. Uh, we're working with, uh, Washington State University to do some online, well, some classroom availability here so that. Students, um, living in Pasco in the Tri-Cities area during the COVID crisis don't have to travel. Uh, quite so much, but do have a place to go, and so, uh, we actually on Monday and Wednesdays host, uh. Us, I guess a hotspot for them at the, uh, Police Community Center. So it's just kind of a, kind of a cool thing and, and, uh, kind of a COVID-inspired. Partnership with the university, so.
Great, well, thank you for that. Anybody else under miscellaneous discussion? All right, is there a need for an executive session tonight, Mr. Zabel?
Not this evening.
This is Councilmember Roach, and I do just have one thing that I wanted to, uh, let council know about. Um, at the end of August, um, I met with a handful of employees from Twinsy Foods. Uh, to just hear directly from them about work conditions, uh, in the facility. They're essential workers, um, and they are, they're concerned for their health and their safety there. Um, they have not had the best or the safest working conditions there, and so, um. You know, part of the, the thing that they were letting me, uh, updating me on was that they were filing for. A union election. And so majority of these workers, there's about two hundred workers at that facility, they are, um, Pasco residents. And unfortunately, you know, they, um. Had a couple deaths that resulted out of COVID, and so I just wanna express my concern for those employees. And support for them to have a safe and healthy, uh, work environment, so, um. As an individual, I am, I had signed a letter of support and along with some other people, um, around Tri-Cities. Uh, from Western, Kennewick and Pasco as well, so I just wanna let council know that.
Thank you, Mr. Roach.
This is Mayor Cortembarajas.
Yes.
And I wanna just add to what Councilwoman, uh, Roach just mentioned. Um, I did not meet with them personally, but I did participate in a Zoom meeting. Where these individuals, the employees were expressing their concerns and their fears, uh, legitimate fears, um, and so. I too signed on as an individual to this, uh, letter of support. Um, and, um, so just requesting, if anyone else is interested, uh, let me know, I can connect you with. The uni, uh, union organizer. Um, they are currently working with UFCW, um, Local fourteen thirty-nine. Um, again, it's, it's our community members, uh. People from the Tri-Cities that are working there, uh, essential workers. Exposing their life, their health, their families and, um. Doing what they can to provide for their families, but also, um, at the risk of, you know, um, infecting everyone. So if, if, again, um, as an individual, I signed on to this and I, um, hope. More of us can come together and support them and, uh, join, um, join in a louder voice for them. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Rojas. All right, well, if there's nobody else, uh, that, um. Completes our agenda items for this, uh, work session, so with that, uh, everybody stay safe. Stay indoors, uh, keep yourself safe from the smoke and, and, uh. Our social distancing, uh, keep those practices and everybody wear masks and, um. Have a great evening and we'll see you next week, thank you, this meeting is adjourned.